Ladies and gentlemen, this is the 20 November 2013 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today we'll be discussing some of our infrastructure projects, reports we owe, and reports back that we're expecting and a variety of administrative items. Before we begin, a couple items. One, a reminder, we're still looking for volunteers for our various boards and committees. In particular, at the moment, still have a vacancy on the zoning board of appeals, as well as a non-elect on the Hatfield Redevelopment Authority. And there are other board and committee vacancies that occur from time to time also. I'd like to encourage folks, if you're interested, please contact the town administrator. Work continues on the town hall renovation, phase one, and I just want to say we regret any inconvenience to citizens coming here to do business, but especially I wanted to thank, and the board wants to thank, the staff for their patience and flexibility during this period of construction. I know it's not been easy. Some good news, we received 100% return on our Community Preservation Act trust fund distribution this year from the state, $129,000. That represents a $20,000 increase over our highest previous amount. And over $60,000 of that was attributable to the fact that we're a 3% community. So, good news, some funds to do some important work. Finally, some of you may have missed, we did have a session recently, a couple weeks back, with the Board of Assessors, and the tax rate for fiscal year 14 is $12.67, which represents a .37 increase over the prior year. And we expect to remain the second lowest of any city and town in Hampshire County. Are there any other announcements?
No.
Community forum? Are you here for a community forum?
Yes. Well, my name is Nick Mataro, and I represent the Grill Chill, and we are, should we have representative with a forum, compressing our liquor license hours to be extended earlier than weekends. What we're trying to do is do breakfast on Saturdays and Sundays, and right now, we can start serving at nine o'clock in the morning on Saturdays and noon on Sundays. And we are looking to extend that earlier, you know, for the normal breakfast stuff, mimosas and, you know, Bloody Marys and that type of thing. The ABCC said that the Saturday should be an easy fix, no issues, but the Sunday one, usually there's a town vote. I'm not sure what that entails, or if it's a select board vote, they didn't really know. But that's what we're looking for.
Okay, when I read this, Tony, you just want to change it from nine o'clock to eight o'clock? Is that basically what you're doing?
Eight o'clock on Saturdays is the earliest we can go, and on Sunday, the earliest, I believe, is nine.
Okay, because right now, it's at what, nine and 10?
Nine on Saturdays and noon on Sundays.
And noon on Sundays.
Yep.
Well, the town, we discussed this back in August of 2010, and we tabled it at a Board of Selectment meeting at the time, and did not take to town meeting, and have not taken to town meeting, Section 33B of the law, which would permit the Board of Selectmen acting as the liquor licensing authority to adopt these hours that are being proposed. So, normally, we don't take up our business in forum, but I'm not clear that we have the authority at this point to grant the hour changes that are being requested. Do you?
I move we take it under advisement at this point in time. Tony, that's what we'll do. We can't vote on it today. I mean, it was just brought to us today, so take a look at this. This is what you're actually proposing to do? So, I think we need to do a little bit of homework on this and then get back to you.
Okay, no problem.
And I'll have you come in.
Okay, and just one other, fair enough, and one other thing, in our capacity as liquor licensing authority, we do not need to post a meeting. We can simply act on it.
On making hours, I believe we do. When you've got to have specific guidelines or something like that.
I'm clear on the law.
It has to be at our meetings. That's what it used to be.
I'm talking about open meeting law. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. We'll get back to you.
Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes of Board of Selectmen for November?
I move we accept the minutes from November 4th.
Are there any changes first?
Did you have something in there? You have to do it.
Yeah, I did. Did you have any? Okay, on page three, just about, we talked about in the last section, board health issues, but does not get involved with animal control and zoning enforcement. So, the zoning enforcement discussion was omitted there.
Good catch, I think.
That's all right. Any subject to that one correction, is there a motion to approve as submitted?
Move that we prove it as the minute, or with the...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any corrections to the minutes of 29 October?
Yeah, I have one. First page Jericho wrote down to, uh, third line up. I was to contact Bill Young, I think that's supposed to be Jim LaValle.
No.
Just for the record.
Okay. Any other changes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended? So, move...
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any changes to the minutes of 4 September?
I don't have any changes on that. I move we accept them as...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You taking it, or are you taking it?
Well, yeah, one of the things we need to decide today is how the king system's going to work for the town hall. The question is, do we just have one key? So, let's say, you know, I have one key to get into the building, and it also gets into my office. Or do we want to set up a system with two keys? One key for the exterior doors, and then another key for the internal doors? And I know Ed has some opinions on that, but I think it's a topic that needs to be discussed. I know, in my previous job, I just, you know, I just had one key to get into the building, get into my office, and that's one way to do it. The, one of the advantages of going to the two-key system is that with the current project, there was no work planned for the exterior doors, so that would be a change order. And whether or not we go to a, whether or not we change the locks on the exterior doors now, we should change them at, if we don't change them now, we should change them at some point, because I, my experience here so far is there's a lot of people in town who have keys to get into this building, and those locks need to be changed nonetheless, now or sometime in the near future.
My point, my take on this, is that when you go to a key system, okay, one system would be for the exterior doors, and you'd have one key for that. And because it's going to be a change order, I think that should be left just the way it is until we're ready to change it. But the interior should have a key system built into it, so this can be, this can be, one key will open up the, it'd be a master key, or a grand master, what they call it, that will open up all the doors, and then, as the tree goes down, the keys that open up the normal doors to everybody's office would be keyed just to that. But it would be keyed to the system, whereas you would have a grand master key, you'd have a maintenance key, and then you'd have the office keys. There's not much change except for the grand master and the maintenance keys. The maintenance key would only open certain doors, like a supply closet, like offices that would need access for cleaning. And that's how the system basically works. So, a person doesn't have to carry around 30 keys with them to go into each door. So, like Phil, if he had a problem, he'd have the grand master, he could go to any door in the town hall and just open it up. Okay, that's the way the system works. And then the exterior system is the reason I like, and it was sold to me years ago, on the two-key system, is because if you did have a number of keys outstanding that opened up the outside doors, first of all, if they open up the outside doors and the inside doors under the same key, then if something happened that when somebody retires, somebody doesn't give their key back, they quit, whatever, you've got to change the interior locks plus the exterior locks. This way here, you only have to change the exterior locks, period. So, it saves you a lot of money on that system, going with a two-key system. One would be the exterior door, the other one would be the interior door.
So, you're saying hold off on the outside?
Pardon?
You're saying hold off on the outside doors?
Hold off on the outside doors until they get the inside done, but the inside one, go with the key system, with that tree system.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Because the exterior doors would be just one key, everybody would get that key, and if, if you want to change it down the road, let's say for security in the next two years, you just change the outside locks, the tumblers and the outside locks, and give everybody one new key. That's it.
What's the added cost if we weren't to go on, do the outside doors?
What's that?
What would be the added cost?
We haven't gotten that.
No, well, then I guess I'll say it with you.
Yeah, that's why I figured we'd just put it off, because...
Well, the only change I think we'll make on the outside doors is we're going to do it ourselves, correct?
We'll do it ourselves.
Yeah, okay, and I think we, you know, all the keys on the outside doors will be keyed the same, not like they are today.
That's exactly right.
With three different keys for three doors.
Right, one key will open up all the doors in the town hall exterior, and everybody could get into any door.
So, you're saying just key the inside?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
But the, now, you're talking one master key, basically it would be four maintenance?
One master key, you'd have a grand master, which would be under Phil's control. That would open up every key, every closet.
Well, you'd have to have one for, because now we have the lockbox out here for the fire department.
Right.
So, you'd have to have one in there too, so they...
Yeah, that would, that would go in the lockbox, right.
So, two grand masters.
So, you'd have two.
Well, but I'm saying he would be in control, I don't care if you have two or three, okay, it'd be under his control.
Well, I wouldn't go, I would go with the minimum that we need, and that way you know, got the key, the fire department's got the key. That's it.
Right.
So, we don't have to go through, how are people getting in, so?
And probably a third key should stay in the vault in the clerk's office, or something like that, just in case.
Well, there's three things we care about, one, safety, security, and what the cost is. Ideally, many activities are moving away from hard keys and going to thumbprint, or biometrics, or a swipe card, or a hundred other ways to do this, where we can really get better control, but I guess that's, the cost factor would be an issue there. But the other two are safety and security. I mean, I think Paul was being polite when he was saying about, in other words, we have weak key control, and there's property here in the building, and I've heard reports of staff here working during night, seeing people who they don't even recognize now. So, we do need to take care of this, absolutely. The one thing I'm concerned about is on the safety thing. We're talking about a grand master and a maintenance key. And help me understand, help me understand the, what, the maintenance key, is that something that would be issued to someone other than...
A cleaning person. Or it could be...
Okay, but they'd need to get into offices to clean.
All of them.
Only certain offices, some offices you can't go into.
No office should have privacy information or anything simply being protected by the exterior door. It needs to be controlled internally with, properly secured in a safe or something.
Some stuff in that office is, I don't want to get into it on TV.
Yeah.
Okay, it's basically, sometimes you have stuff that comes in for a certain project, it's sitting there, you know, and there's no way, that's the only place that you can put it. So, you have to be really careful.
So, those offices will...
And there's not that, there's only like one or two.
Clean themselves, or what?
Pardon?
Those offices will take care of themselves?
As they are today, yes.
Yeah, then somebody'd have to be there when they go in to clean, if they wanted it cleaned, otherwise they'd take care of themselves. And there's only like probably two or so.
Who to three?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, and back up, what's the concept so that Phil, and say the police and fire or emergency responders can get into a room or get into the building?
That would be in their lockbox.
That lockbox that they have up front here. They have a key to the lockbox, and that's, they get in, the key's in there, and then that's why I said we've got to have one in there, so they can get into every room, and probably including, um, these offices that you're...
Could be an exit hole area.
Basically, even these offices that you're telling me...
Oh, absolutely.
They can't, nobody can get into unless you're here. I mean, if there's a fire in there, I...
You've got to get in there.
You know, so there's going to have to be...
But the master key will open up every door.
And that's the one that's going to be available to the emergency responders?
Right, that's for the, Phil would have it, one would be in the vault, and the other one would be for the fire department.
Or, you know, or police or...
Police, whatever, yeah. That's it.
Okay. So, as long as, that's the most...
That's the advantage of the key system, one key fits everything.
Okay, what's the cost, and do we have the money?
Well, that should be included in the system.
It's included, yeah, it's included.
Except for the exterior doors.
Right, except for the exterior doors.
So, it's no, we're just talking about how to execute, not...
How to execute, correct.
Right.
Yeah. But there's been differing opinions on, you know, the, how to deal with the exterior doors, so, as you can see, it can get to be a complicated question.
Like the mailroom, for instance, you could have the mailroom here, everybody's key that opens up their office door could open up the mailroom door on that system, so they wouldn't have to have two keys. Okay, that's, that's how you set the system up, if that's what you want. If you want to control the mailroom, then there'll be one key that somebody has to keep going to get.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, it's good that this is there, because now you can put your keys, you know, what, what do you want to open up what doors, and so on. And the other question I have is, you've got the number of keys, I think the number of keys should be up to the individual boards, like the assessors, for instance, if they need four keys, they need four keys. Okay, that shouldn't be up to anybody except for them, because they know how many people are going to be able to access their office. As long as we have signed out for the keys, we have a name for them, so we can get the keys back. So, you shouldn't dictate as far as how many keys each board is going to have.
Well, I, I'll just, some of our committees...
On the elected boards.
The elected boards, okay.
The elected boards, I'm getting at.
All right, all right.
Yeah. Appointed boards are totally different.
Yeah, some of our committees are rather large, and so, you know, do you really want all those keys floating out there?
Only on the elected.
Elected, okay, okay.
That's, that's the ideal with, say, a card system, you just get on your computer and take that person off when they're off the board, and they're, they can't, no longer have access.
Well, you're going to have to give, well, for one, the conservation commission, they're not elected, all these elected, unelected, appointed committees that are having...
You would automatically have a key anyway.
I would, but I'm just saying, if I wasn't on conservation, you...
Then the chairman and maybe one or two other designated people, that's, that's what you'd have to have for backups.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it can't be just elected officials, it's got to be at least one committee member.
Well, that's what I'm saying is, the elected officials would get whatever they need, okay, for people that are elected in their office. But the appointed ones, like the conservation or, or...
Only the chairman.
All the other boards would only get one or two or three, whatever you decide. But that's something you're going to decide.
Yeah, Phil and I will work out the details.
Okay, can you live with us?
Yes.
You live with us?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the strategy of the key system as proposed?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, but I also want to add, what are we doing with the building out back? Is that going to have the same system?
That's totally separate.
That's going to be totally separate?
Yeah, it just wouldn't work because of the way the police have to have their keys separate, and the fire department and the ambulance, it didn't really matter much, so we ended up going with three separate systems, that's it, three separate keyed areas.
Right, but...
It's not on the system.
Again, the...
Again, for safety and security purposes.
For Phil, he would have a key.
There is a master.
He would have a key to get, he can't, he can't have a key to get into the police department at all. Nobody gets into the police department.
So, if we have a fire in there, we could sit there and watch the place burn down? I don't think so.
They break the door down. That's it, they have a thing to open up the door, and they break it, they break into it. That's the way it works, that's the law. I went over this over and over again with Tom.
Would you confirm that with town council, please? I don't believe that can be true.
Will do. Yeah, I had the...
Just relaying the message.
Yeah, I know.
I had the same conversation with, with Mike.
Just to get the citation that they're, what law they're citing.
Phil should definitely have a key to the firehouse.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
But again, I think that...
Well, let's, let's close, let's close on this building here. So, as proposed here...
Second.
Second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, let's, let's talk about the keys while we're on the subject for...
Well, my understanding out there is that even in the police department, that the offices will be locked. But what about the garage area? Because that's where the mechanic room is going to be located, above the offices and the garage, so...
I have no...
I'm just saying if something fails during the week, no one's here.
That's something we're going to have to discuss with the chief, and he should be here talking about it.
Just get confirmation as to whether there's any legal impediment to...
So, that would be my only concern.
For matters of safety.
If something happened to the one or the, something over there in the mechanical area.
If anybody's got to get in there, then an officer's got to be there to open the door, period. That's the way it should be.
We'll, we'll confirm that.
Okay.
We're certainly not going to sit there and watch it burn, because we don't have a key.
Well, they, they don't, just like if they went to your house and there wasn't a key, they'd open up your door, they have this machine or this thing that goes in and pushes the jam, and it opens the door right up.
Or a hammer.
Don't get in, don't get in your house.
Paul, next one?
Concrete steps, I sent you an email yesterday, we had a conference around the steps on Monday, and I think we came up with a good solution to that problem. So, the building inspector was there, and I was there, Ed was there, the general contractor was there, the subcontractor was there, and after much discussion, it was decided to, they've already, they've already demolished the steps themselves. The frame is still there, so the question was, is the frame going to get ripped out, or can we salvage it? And the contractor was saying, there's no reason to pull that out, you know, we can work around this. So, they're going to raise up the frame and put a cap on that overlaps, so that water will not be able to get underneath.
Right.
And they're, you know, we're adding a step, the way the architect had laid it out was that there was going to be a slope, which none of us thought would work all that well, but it definitely needs to, we all felt that adding another step and then just a level concrete walkway towards the back parking lot was the way to go. So, everyone was in agreement on that, and so that work is proceeding. But this has been, this has been going around and around for a couple of weeks, so we finally got it nailed down.
Okay, the big, the last time we met, the big concern was they were going to add on top of the slab and on top of the steps, and if the water gets in there, it's going to crack up.
Right.
What they did is they, they jackhammered all the steps in the, in the cap out of there.
That's not it.
Okay, took it out. So, now, they left this, the main wall that sits there, the frame wall, okay?
For the steps.
For the steps, right. So, now they can put new, they can raise up the, the top of the landing, so it's even with the inside floor, and then start their steps down. And then when they get to the bottom one, instead of, because this, all this from the bottom step out was all extra, it was going to cost us, who knows how many thousands of dollars. So, what Stanley and I and everybody talked about is adding one more step on the bottom here.
That makes it ground level?
And that makes it almost the ground level, so then you just come in with black top, and that's it. And we could do the black top, or the contractor could do it, if the contractor does it, we're going to pay X amount of dollars.
You're not going to get contract, you're not going to get blacked up. In another, in another week, you're not going to get blacked up.
Well, that's why...
So, you wait till springtime and have the highway department do it.
That's, that's why, you know, I'd like to see the highway department just come in and do it, and get it done. But that's, that's something that Phil, so, anyway, the bottom line is, since they jackhammered the steps out, we don't have the problem of anything lifting there. The cap, right now, the existing wall goes over, and the cap would go over and down and over, so no water could get back up. It looks something like this. So, no water could come back in and get inside to push that cap up, and inside, they're going to be putting steel rods and stuff on that cap to strengthen it. That we agree on, that, you know, the big thing was the steps that had the problem with...
Actually, if you go out there this morning, they've got it all framed up. It looks like, it looks like they'll probably pour it today.
Yeah.
Okay, my question, I'm looking at this change order.
Yeah, it's the cost.
The cost is 562 for labor, the cost of $7,000 for parts and material, what's this about? I am not going to pay that bill. I'm going to tell you right now, I will not sign that warrant, there's no way. We agreed at our last meeting, this was going to be paid for by the mess-up of that subcontractor, they're the ones going to pay it.
Yeah, that, that change request is already out of date, well, then it should have been told to me.
This is why, in the beginning, I said we should have a weekly meeting to discuss this stuff here, and we've only had like two or three meetings since this project's done, and little things like this should be taken care of, just like they are in the back there, okay?
Okay, but Jan's point, at our last session, we voted that this would come at no cost, the fix out here, so, is there...
Right, there is no cost.
Oh, okay.
On doing that part with jackhammering it out and putting the cap over it...
Right.
And putting the stairs back in...
Okay.
There's no extra cost.
And the only other thing was the tar, the black top down at the base, but we can do that ourselves?
With the exception of one step, okay? They will charge us for that one step coming down.
They're not going to charge me for one step, I'm going to tell you right now, I refuse to pay it. They messed up the original, they pay for it. Why are we going to pay for it? Why don't we just give them a week's pay for nothing?
Jan, if you...
Don't go on vacation. No, I'm not going to pay for it, I'll tell you right now, I refuse to pay for it.
The way...
If somebody comes to my house and messes up a project, I'm not going to pay for it, and I don't expect the town to pay.
Not messed up, Jan, they're putting it back the way it's supposed to be.
Well, then they pay for it.
What we have to do is, when they put it back the way it is, all right, we have to pay to put this slab in and then put the ramp going out to the driveway. That was never figured in the contract for some reason, okay?
I understand that, that's what we talked about.
So, to eliminate all that.
That's the cost here, this is another cost on this, this page of 5,000, let me see.
The other ones I'm not sure on.
$5,350.
But I'm just trying to get through this one first.
That's what it's looking like to me, for concrete, asphalt walks.
What this is, is instead of them putting in a concrete slab and all this other stuff, if we added one more step here, okay, and then we put our black up top up to it, we wouldn't have to raise anything up high, we'd be down to almost ground level, and then we'd just run the black top in up to that step. So, that one step, I'm not sure how much it would cost, but my guess would only cost 300 to 500 bucks, that's it, for the one step, because they got to pin it the way they, they put it in. What the original, I mean, the engineer or architect was trying to do is make this landing correspond with the new ramp going up to the second floor down the... correspond with the new ramp going up to the second floor down the road five years from now. And it just didn't make sense because you couldn't finish everything off. You'd end up with a high slope, the whole bit. So the solution would be to put one step in here. And that's it. Now...
So what... So there's no cost or the original cost?
Well, there would be a cost for this bottom step because that would be like the...
Do we know what that is?
And there was another change to, from the original.
What was the other thing?
A handrail on the building. It wasn't originally designed with a handrail on the building. And when Stanley went out to inspect it, he said, "You have to put a handrail on the building." There needs to be two handrails. It was only designed with one. So that will be another additional cost. But it's like $350, something like that.
I would like to see the exact figures, not what you're telling me and then while we adjust it, readjust it. I don't hope for that. I'm sorry. When I pay for something, I wanna know what I'm paying for, number one. And number two, I'm not gonna pay for any of this project other than the original. It was their mess-up, they fixed it at their cost, not at the townspeople's cost. Ed, you're the one that always says, "You're a taxpayer too." I am, and so isn't everybody in this town, and I refuse to pay that. I don't care.
We're not paying for anything that was...
Well, what are those figures that I'm looking at?
We're not paying for anything that was supposed to be there. They ripped it out. They're putting new back in, all right? And that's the bottom line. What we have to do is, because the architect didn't figure this in in the very beginning, all right, we have to put this slab in here or we have to put this sidewalk in here.
Then he should pay for it.
I mean, what's that?
Then he should pay for it. If it's the architect's mess-up, we paid him enough to design it.
Maybe we should get him in here and talk and let him take it. Okay?
Well, I'm just telling you.
That's what's happening.
It's pretty easy to mess something up and say, "Okay, well..."
We're not paying for any of this. From this point on, we're not paying for anything. They're redoing the whole thing and it's not costing us a penny. Now, I guess I'm gonna turn it over to you now, Paul, 'cause I'm not sure myself about the added cost.
Yeah, well, I haven't gotten the updated change request yet.
'Cause there is no added cost for a window well. That's all been taken care of. I mean, the excavation and structural concrete, that's all gone. So this, to me, is gone with the exception of $350 handrail on that.
What's the second page, though?
I didn't get that.
There's another 500 and, I mean, $5,350 here for asphalt, for concrete, for labor.
No, we're not paying it.
I hope not. Well, what's... Why do we get this bill?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, as far as putting in the...
How about, we'll take it look for right now. How about coming back, let us know what the proposed cost is and for what?
Yeah, and for what?
These are... Jan, these are gone. The way I'm looking at it, this is all gone.
But if they're gone, why are they in my packet? I guess that's my next...
Well, because I put the packet together last week and things move fast.
All right, you'll get the costs.
Yeah.
All right. So really, we should only be looking at that bottom step handrail.
I think, yeah, what would be legitimate costs here is gonna be installing the bottom step and the handrail. Because they were not part of the original design. That's... And as far as the walkway is concerned, you know, we talked about, you know, having the town do that and the contractor said that, you know, that's fine. He doesn't care.
Yeah, that's our obligation. We can have it or not.
Yeah.
So if we can do that, it'll just be our cost and it'll be no $7,000 or $5,000, whatever it is.
You'll take care of the walkway when we get this other part straightened out, I guess. All right, what else on Town Hall?
Yeah, just, as you can see, the windows are going in, though they're a little behind schedule. The subcontractor, they had scheduled to put the windows in, basically, you know, couldn't make it. So Marroy is putting the windows in on their own. I asked them if, you know, this is affecting their schedule and they said, "No, not really." But, you know, they are a little behind on that. So just to keep you up to date with that. The other issue regarding the variance from the Architectural Access Board, just to recap, one of the conditions of the variance was that we had to put in handicap accessible countertops in the two front offices and we had to adjust the handrails leading up to the second floor. So the architect had prepared plans for both those little projects and we received change requests from the contractor back the end of October. But the costs were, well, they're much higher than I would've anticipated, particularly raising the handrails. So we did not make a decision to move forward on those projects at that time. I felt it was still a little too early. There could be more change orders coming down the road that would, you know, essentially eat up our contingency money. But we needed to submit, you know, our plans to the Architectural Access Board by December 1st. So December 1st was quickly approaching. So I have signed off on the change order for the countertops in front. But I've told the architect that we're gonna have to hold off on the handrails because we don't have enough money to do that project. And, you know, we'll have... We are committed to do it. It's part of our variance. So the architect will be submitting documentation to the AAB, you know, looking for a time extension. And I've, I said that, you know, we won't have the money till next fiscal year and, you know, I would anticipate getting that project done by next summer. But, you know, we'll do that on our own.
That's exactly what I'm gonna say. Let the contractor finish that, 'cause I don't wanna see any more costs than anybody else.
I just have an issue with the variance required that we send photographs and evidence of completion of both of those projects by one December. And here, one December was racing tortoise and nothing was being done. So anyway, we agree that we'll delay the handrails and we'll go back to the variance board saying we don't have the funds right now, but we'll take care of this other item and...
To satisfy the board, can we put a lower desk in there that they can wheel their chair up right next to the counter and they have access at that lower desk?
I can't answer that, yeah.
Okay, instead of dropping the counter down right now, if we make provisions for the handicap to come in at a desk, then I think...
Yeah, but where are you gonna put the desk? I mean, you gotta move something down there.
We'll have to figure that out.
See, they're reacting to the proposal of the architect. When they granted the variance, they were responding to his proposals.
But if we don't have enough money to do it...
Well, we...
Okay, I'm looking at...
We have the money to do the counters.
Counters, but not the...
Not the handrails.
And we're not gonna... We're going back saying, "We just can't do that now."
Yeah.
Our estimated completion date is whenever it is.
It's next summer. Yeah, we, I mean, we do have the money. I mean, this is a calculated risk. You know, balancing act between, I don't wanna tick off the AAB on one hand. So I would like to do as much as we can. On the other hand, you know, our contingency money is running low. And can we really afford to do this? So it's the tail end of the project and besides the windows going in, it's mostly finish work that will be occurring. So the chances of more change orders are low. But, you know, like I said, it's a calculated risk.
There shouldn't be any change orders as far as I know. I mean, what...
Well, I wouldn't think so either, yeah.
Okay. Well, just please pay attention to the variance actions and when their responses are due. They can be very helpful or if they perceive, as you recall, they were talking to us about Westfield. When Westfield tried to blow them off, they can be very bureaucratic and make life miserable, so...
Well, I don't feel we're blowing them off. I just feel...
No, I know. We're not now. We're not now. But we're on a course to not even respond to the first suspense we had with them. Okay, what's next? Emergency services building.
Just back up a little bit. But you are right. We need to get in touch with them to make sure that they know what's going on. They don't wanna come in at the last minute and say, "You guys didn't do this," and then all of a sudden find us and then we have to do it from somewhere, have a special town meeting or whatever, and that costs X amount of dollars.
The architect is taking care of it. He's our liaison. And I suggested to him before he actually submit the written materials that he give them a call ahead of time and let them know what was going on. Says he would do that.
Emergency services building.
Yeah, things are, you know, on schedule. I don't think there's any really outstanding issues at this point.
On what, the emergency building?
Yeah.
None that I know of.
Okay, and you're just gonna check on that key issue and...
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Nothing to report.
Well, they did give us, they did give us $6,000 out of $7,000 for that extension of the generator. They wanted more, but we beat them down.
And again, that's December now or... I thought they were a little behind.
Well, they were at first.
Catching up?
The subcontractors were holding them up.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, at the beginning of the project, things seemed to be not where we would like it. But, you know, the contractor's schedules and our schedules are never gonna be the same, so... But, yeah, it got off to a slow start, but, you know, they've caught up. They've caught up.
End of the year?
Yeah, I can't, you know, this project, I get the two dates mixed up. I think that one is scheduled for the 18th, December 18th.
This one's the 16th or something.
I think this was the 20th.
20th, yeah, okay.
Both before Christmas.
Okay.
Another, they're gonna, I think that today they're supposed to start sheet rocking in that back building.
Okay. Fire department.
Design options and cost. Phil, I gotta call into RK Miles. He didn't get back any, but he was supposed to have that drawing done.
Okay. You got the other one?
If you could, call Doug at RK Miles.
I gotta stop in there anyways.
I think Mike is, Mike was handling it, I think. We can just go over and pick it up.
Okay.
Water transmission line.
The water transmission line is in full swing. They did the interconnection on West Street last week and they're gonna work tonight to tie it in because we don't disrupt too many people out there. So the plan is for tonight to do the actual connection. The pipes weren't supposed to be. They put it in. Flowable filled Route 5, patched it. I seen some pipe being delivered up there, so... Been full swing now and haven't heard anything.
Okay. The letters to Rosenberg and CoCoT were not in here. Has that been taken care of?
That's for Jericho Road. I mean, that's for the dike, not the water transmission line. Underneath the 91. You were supposed to send the letter out to them.
Okay, regarding what exactly?
Regarding the extra cost.
The minutes from our last meeting?
The cost. The cost of jacking under 91.
Oh, okay.
Just 300, I believe it's $300,000. We're looking for reimbursement from them.
Okay, oh, I remember now.
Because when the bridge was built, there's a bay underneath there that we should've been able to hang that water on and from and it cost us $300,000 more because we have to jack under 91. So we want the state to pick that up.
Okay. I'll take care of that.
This week?
Yep.
Thank you, please.
Okay.
Dyke, CEI requests.
I put in your packet the latest correspondence from Nick Christofari. The original project is winding down. He's doing the final inspection coming up. So some co is just about completed, the original project. And as you know, we wanted to do the extension of the other portion when selectmen at Damskin, myself, took a site visit down there. So the request is here and it looks to me like all they're asking for is some kind of permission or a letter of favor, a favorable letter from our conservation commission.
Okay, I did check because we had our meeting last Wednesday and most of the board didn't realize that we actually gave them any type of permitting. After looking at it with Wilma Monday when I came in here, you took out the original permit.
Correct.
And that's who we gave the permission to was the town of Hatfield and the landowners, actually. So what we gotta find out and, like I told you, to see if we have to go, what property is this expansion gonna go on?
If it's the same landowner.
Is it?
I don't know. That's what your question was.
That's right. So we gotta find out who owns the land and then we're gonna have to, you as the town representative in charge of this project, basically, would have to fill out another application, give it to Wilma and hopefully we can have a meeting before, after the first year. I'm not sure what the rest of the board's plan is, but I know we weren't gonna have an incident until after the first year, so...
Just for folks, what we're talking about is Dyke restoration project. We essentially completed the most recent project to the north of Bridge Lane. And there's another small section of 160 feet between it and a section that had been restored back in the 80s. And there is some emergency management money, grant money, still available that we think we can compete for and we have funds from the original article that would be able to cover down the town's COFs share. So we're trying to go through the process again to get a request in to MEMA before that money goes away. And one of the hurdles is getting through conservation quickly. Well, are you on track then of what you need to do?
Yes, I mean, I think the property owner is the big thing to find out if it's the same property owner, that extra 160 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure how far down the owner, you know, with this.
Jericho. I'm recusing myself from substantive discussion, but there are two things. One, there were some purported legal issues regarding the matter that were to be investigated. I don't know what they are. And second, we owe presumably filing the answer to that and answer to Mr. Harlow regarding his request. But otherwise, I'm recusing myself from the discussion, so...
Well, I mean, my concern back then, Phil, I think it's, we're waiting for an answer from you, Phil. You were supposed to check on... My concern was a 16-foot right-of-way going down through there and it's not enough room for emergency vehicles and there's no revisions for a turnaround at the end.
Correct.
Okay, that was my concern on that whole thing. So originally, I thought the owner was supposed to put their own road down to service those three. Then it wouldn't have been no problem. But now I guess they're looking for the town to reconstruct that road and if we do it there, what Phil is saying is if we do it there, we'll end up having to do it in other places. So his, I believe your intentions are not to do that at all. So, his, I believe your intentions are not to do that at all. And also, if I recall, I asked to have the building inspector come in, because he's the one that's issuing permits on roads like this here, when the road isn't.
Improved.
Road isn't improved. So, that, there's a double issue here. So, and you were supposed to check with the attorney, I'm trying to think.
I had Paul working on that, so. Paul, the.
Town consul.
Town consul, did you get a hold of him about that road and what the legality is?
I did, and I'd rather not discuss it in open meeting.
Okay.
Could, could go to litigation, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so that's fair enough.
We can have a little chat afterwards.
Okay. We can go into executive session, discuss that, on the possible litigation.
All right, hold. Any other discussion on that matter? Mass Works, we're supposed to get word this month about our grant proposal.
Haven't heard.
No?
No, I mean, I, I put it on the agenda because.
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
November is the announcement.
Maybe we would have heard by now, but we haven't.
Okay. This is, has to do with some water and sewer work along Route 5 and 10. And once again, we have a request in to the state for a Mass Works grant to do a section of that, and the announcement of awards is due this month, we're waiting on that. Smith Academy, the accelerator repair program. Anything on that?
I, I, I think I might have stuck that on there originally because.
Yeah. Nothing to report, really. Things are, well, things are moving along.
There's a four-December redesign that.
The designs are moving along.
They're taking care of at the school.
Yeah.
The funding certification, you said you've taken care of it.
I just had to sign something, yeah.
And it's just a repeat of what we agreed to earlier or acknowledged. Remember in the certification package that we signed off on? We acknowledged that the town would be reimbursed in increments of $50,000. You have to wait to get 50,000 expense before you can submit for reimbursement, so. All right, nothing else on that?
Yeah, the reimbursement rate will be 50.58%. 50.58.
It's 51% essentially.
Yeah, 51%.
It hasn't changed.
So, the reimbursement rate, so they would give 51%, we'd be paying 49, is that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
When Phil could have, when they could have put the whole roof on for nothing four years ago through a grant.
Anyways, I've been in, you know, pretty regular communication with the superintendent on this, and, yeah, things are moving forward. The Mass School Billing Authority will be meeting in January, and then we will know at that point whether this project has been accepted or not. So, we're still on schedule.
Okay. Center School.
Yeah, I have a handout here for you.
Center School, are you on a different? Where are you on Center School here?
Right here.
Oh, the audit, I didn't see you go through the audit. What'd you do, skip around?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm waiting for the audit to come up.
I'm sorry. All right, back, good catch. I'm trying to hurry things along.
I was wondering what was going on.
Fiscal year 13 audit, we're supposed to have audit completed in November, and it's necessary to support USDA loan, it's necessary to support lease agreement, there's a third thing that escapes me for the moment.
Yeah, is he still out there?
Yes, he is.
So, it's not done?
Yeah, have him come in.
Give us an update on the audit?
Yeah. I didn't think they were gonna be coming back out here again, but.
How're you doing?
Good.
We're gonna put you on the hot spot.
You're, you're a target of opportunity.
I don't know how much information I would be able to give you guys as far as.
A simple, a simple question, are we still on track for a report, an audit report this month?
I'm up at school right now, so the last I talked to them is, I'm just doing narratives, which is just processing, going to each person, say, "What's your job as far as payroll goes, disbursements go?" And when I last talked to them, they told me that they were just waiting on that stuff to finish up their report. So, I think that numbers-wise, all their stuff is on track to be done. And what I'm doing right now isn't, it's more for their information than it is that goes into any manager's report or anything like that. So, I think that their information's all set to.
So, we'll get a management report?
I think that everything should be on time. I could talk to them and give you guys an answer tomorrow or early next week, but they haven't told me anything, like they're held up by anything.
All right, so the report will go into Paul, or a verbal report or some kind of a.
We'll get a draft.
No, we'll get a draft.
A draft and report, yeah.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, if it's gonna take a month to get the report in, and we can get this over to the financial institution that needs it, maybe a verbal with a cover letter or something like that, that.
I can talk to them today.
There are no deficiencies, or there are deficiencies, whatever.
I can talk to them today and see where they are with the report, if everything's gonna be on track, and give you guys a heads up tomorrow.
Okay.
Where everything is.
Appreciate it very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Energy report, annual report, and the revised five-year plan with a new base date.
So, update on this, the original deadline for all this was December 3rd, but because of, the state website was down for several days, it couldn't be accessed. They've extended the deadline until December 16th, which was really good for me, because I've been trying to, because the, the school project is, you know, still in the development stage, you know, I don't have terrific numbers to put in the report, so I'm, I do have, I do have some, some energy savings numbers for the roof part of the project, which are pretty soft, but in my conversations with DOER, Jim Berry to be exact, this is something that I didn't realize before, in developing the energy savings numbers, they're, they require that 15%, you know, we're looking for a 20% reduction. They say 15%, you know, it really has to be hard numbers, while the other 5%, you know, can be soft, you know, guestimates. So, I think the numbers that I'll be submitting in the final plan will be guestimates for the school project. But, you know, it certainly needs to be in here, because it's probably gonna be the most significant energy savings project that we're likely to do anytime soon. But the timing of the school project and the timing of the supplemental for this are, you know, not ideal. But I did, you know, working with Guardian Energy Management Solutions, that they've been working in the town, you know, coming back and forth since the summer, you know, developed a dozen projects that, that look viable in, you know, various buildings.
I didn't see anything in here regarding the sewage treatment. They were, we were talking about replacing some pumps up there that were gonna save a lot of money. I don't see that in here.
Or wastewater treatment?
No, no, in the, in the Guardian report.
Yeah, I don't know whether, honestly, I don't know whether that's something they looked at.
Okay, 'cause it was supposed to be a substantial savings on the sewage treatment plan if we put that unit that, remember it couldn't go on a roof and.
Oh, oh, that's something different, that's the, that's the heating system, no, that's in here.
Yeah, that's in here.
That's in here.
Okay, that's in this report.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I told them from the get-go that that was, that was pretty much our number-one priority, because it had the.
The most savings.
The most savings. So, in my most recent conversation with Matt at Guardian, he said, you know, they know all about the problems that we had before with that project, and he told me, I think, I think we've got a great solution for that, so.
Good, but it wasn't in the report, that's why.
It is in the report.
In Guardian's report.
Yeah. Well, they call it something different.
Okay.
And they're, they're not sewer pumps. I'll let you find it here.
It's the one that was gonna go on the roof, but now they decided it couldn't go there.
Right here, see, page 10?
Page 10? This is only page nine.
What's the report, my report or their report?
I'm, I'm looking at the makeup air unit replacement.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I see it in here.
All right.
As long as it's in here, that's all I care about.
It's in here, yeah, yeah. There were some other projects in the Guardian report that I dropped from my report, because they were so marginal, but two of them were projects for the library, and I, you know, I've already had some dealings with them, 'cause I had Womiko come in and do some audits. They did an audit at the library, they basically need to replace the lights, talked to Eliza about it, she went to the board, and they weren't interested, they're waiting for their big project, so. I dropped those, 'cause they're probably not gonna happen anyways, at least not anytime soon.
Unless you put them in the out year, the last year or the out year.
Right, right. But we get to our.
But if, the money that we're gonna save, I forget what the payback period is, if we put a new furnace in there, gas, switching it over from oil to gas, it'll be substantial savings.
It would be substantial savings.
Okay, so, I, I mean, that library doesn't take off in five or seven years, okay? I, I mean, we'll have saved a lot of money.
That's something that we don't have a hell of a lot of control over.
Well, it's a town building, we certainly got some control over that as far as saving money.
Yeah.
Right?
So, I, you know, if you want me to put them back in the plan, I can, that's easy enough to do, but I just didn't think it was.
Well, to me, there's a substantial, I don't know how you guys feel, but there is a substantial saving switching over from oil to gas.
Providing it's cheaper to switch it over, I hate to switch something over.
Yeah, according to the report, it was no cost to run the piping.
You're not gonna get your money back in five years.
Yeah. What's the? I wonder what the.
This one you're looking at?
Oh, yeah. I wonder what, what was the payback period on that? The library oil-to-gas conversion was a 21-year payback period.
On switching over?
On switching over, yeah, so I.
Oh, then 21 years, forget about that.
Yeah, the other one was library weatherization, and that was, you know, 14-year payback period.
Well, again, you could put them in.
Of course, one of the reasons why.
The fifth year or the five-year.
One of the reasons why you would do.
Other things would sort out.
You'd see, you know, such a long payback period is just because of the usage at the library, you know, it's pretty minimal. So, yeah, those are fairly long payback periods. So, anyways, we have until, I have until December 16th to submit this and the annual report, which is pretty much done as well.
And is the school on board with the proposed changes here?
As far as I know, I mean, Mike Poshak's in the loop here. I'm actually meeting with the energy committee this afternoon.
Okay. But we need to close on that before we commit them.
Well, the, both the board and the school committee are gonna have to vote to accept the revised plan. So, the board, so we have another meeting on the 10th.
Yes, so be on that, on that date.
So, you know, you can either approve it now or we can wait till the 10th.
Well, we could, we could approve now, our portion.
Right.
What, what is this on now? This is for the school?
No, this is for, this is for the updated plan, the energy use and reduction plan. When I submit this to the state, I will need to submit a letter, two letters. One stating that this plan has the support of the Board of Selectmen, another letter stating that this plan has the support of the school committee.
Okay, well, we should get our letter in.
It goes in together.
Yeah, it goes in right away, get it right in.
Well, it goes in, it all goes together.
It all goes together, yeah.
Yeah, but what if the school doesn't have theirs ready?
Well, we're ready on our end.
Oh, I, I, Michael take care of it.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the draft.
Energy use and reduction plan?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we still got the annual report?
Yes, now, I don't know how to submit that to you, really, so that you can understand it, 'cause it's all spreadsheets.
The annual report just doesn't give, doesn't it give the savings, the annual savings per building, per.
Tells us where we are.
Yeah, yeah.
We oughta be able to understand that.
Yeah, I can print, it's a pain, it's a pain we have to deal with. But I can print it out for you, but it's, it's, it's all, when I submit it, I have to submit it electronically, and it just, it's, it's like, I'm trying to remember now, there's maybe like 10 separate spreadsheets, so you're just, mostly just looking at a bunch of numbers.
But it's, it's the prod, doesn't it list the project in the savings in that kind of a report?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, so.
So, you're almost looking at whatever we.
Well, it's, it's, a lot of it is a duplicate of this.
Yeah. 'Cause your numbers, like, like.
Yeah.
The water, the water plant up in a mountain, I mean, that was a substantial savings, just switching over, insulating those walls and getting that done, that was a substantial savings on the.
I mean, they, they wanna know what, what projects have been completed under the stretch code, you know, and all kinds of stuff like that. How has, how has the vehicle fleet changed, you know, all kinds of stuff like that.
Okay, we've done, we've done with the vehicle, and that should show in the report. We, we did comply with their, with the stretch code as far as the vehicles, we did get Stanley his vehicle, inspection services, school has their electric cart, those are all, those should be all in there.
It's all in there, yeah.
Okay, town hall should be in there, that, we don't have anything to compare to this year, but that's in compliance with the stretch code, not with the building in the back.
In compliance.
Okay, so that, that should be also in here. Basically, if you cover those, that's about what we have.
How about, how about just printing, don't make 15 copies of it, but if you made one, we can go read it.
Let us look at it, yeah.
Okay, all right.
That's all.
Yeah, once I, once I print one out, then it's easy enough.
Leisure reading.
Copies, yeah.
Well, this is a big one, because this keeps us in the running for potential grants.
For the next, for the next round.
Yeah, so that, you know, the next, the next Green Communities round will come out in the spring.
One other thought, and I've shared it with you, but are there any things in here that need to be put in capital plans? That's, we need to.
Is anything over $10,000?
That's right.
Uh, yeah.
As I said, it doesn't, it's fine if it's gonna be paid for by a grant.
But you still want it in the plan.
But you still put it in your capital plan and just indicate it's gonna be paid for by a grant.
Yeah, I think.
So, the school and DPW perhaps need to include.
Most, if not all, of the proposed projects. Most, if not all, of the proposed projects, I think, would have to be in there.
Well, that's a note to DPW and the school to capture those.
Well, no, not, no. Well, we've basically got ten projects, and, and I'm planning on, uh, submitting for the first five for next year, which are the, um, the big, the big-ticket items. And they're all over $10,000, so there's, there's five projects there. The other five, the last five projects are smaller project, they're all under ten, so...
Okay. An operating budget, I guess.
So, so they'll all need to go in.
Okay. Channel fifteen, plan?
Yeah, put that in the packet.
You did? I didn't get it. Did you get it?
Should be right in front of the, uh... Oh, it was, it was mixed in with another one. Look in the backside of one of these, that's where mine was. 'Cause they were paper clipped together, I think they got connected together.
Nope. Maybe here. Well, we'll share yours.
I already read that. I can't find it either. I'm the only one that got it, or what?
I think John can probably speak to that.
Yeah.
Talking about the antiquated assist, uh, equipment that we have, updating it, and, uh...
It's all on there. Basically, I broke it down into phases instead of overall. Wanted to make the portable, look at the portable, make the cluster forty-seven four meetings, allow to go to different locations, and, uh, do more work, do more time, boarding, setting up. Uh, the other thing is that everything's still analog. There's a lot of change from analog to digital. Uh, it involves more time spent to get what we have, what we need to do and work together, basically, the server, which is all digital. And then, too, it's on, on the studio, and we can have some audiovisual, TV, video, things with the laptops downstairs, to see some of the things with the laptop presentations or amplify the system or put a low viewing area, it'll be doing, adhering to the people, there's a subwoofer, we're gonna put a monitor in, we can put those, those people in there, watching the TV.
I recall, John, we put in quite a bit of money this year for extra equipment, thinking that we were gonna supply the, the, uh, the new, um, meeting room and so on and so forth, and that's why we updated as far as what was on, uh, the proposal with Comcast.
Thank you.
All right, uh, didn't, when we, 'cause there's a line in there that they pay for this equipment. It's not in our budget here, it's in their, in Comcast, right. They, they get, give us the money back.
I'm totally unaware of that.
What's that?
I was not involved in that part of the negotiation. But that's part of the contract, for the cable.
I remember when we talked about that, that's why the, the rate was raised up, uh, whatever it was, another couple of cents, to pay for some of the equipment that's coming up. I don't know if you guys remember that.
All our costs comes out of the grant money.
Yeah.
It's the grant money, or it's, it's actually the money that comes from the bills that's assessed.
Comcast calls it a grant, it's basically not a grant, it is a loan, it's payback of the cable bills to the customers. So even though they're called a grant, it's not really a grant. All the money we're getting out, and operates the station and my salary, is coming from Comcast.
Right.
There's no provision there for this, that they give us any more money.
But there was supposed to be enough in there for equipment and stuff?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
That's all, that was all worth it.
All right, so there should be no reason that we can't get this equipment?
No.
Okay.
There's money in there right now.
Okay, that's all I'm getting.
And there's money coming every year.
Yeah.
Unlike the previous contract, the contract that was twelve years ago, that was broken onto a big lump sum, a few smaller sums. In the fifth year, there was a catch-up sum, to catch up to technology, and then smaller sums that they paid for every year. This is basically kind of the same way, there's, but this, this contract has provisions for salary and provisions for capital. Though Comcast doesn't really care what you do with the money, once you get the money, so you can, you can transfer from the salary fund to the equipment fund or the operation fund.
Right, and that's all I'm saying is, let's just buy the equipment if we need it.
Right.
Get it in there and, and get it bought.
Right, but it has to, it has to be, it's done in stages or in packages, 'cause, like, this little setup, you can just record here, there's actually about ten different manufacturers in there, you just don't say, "Give me a little thing to record, you pick out a camera from, this is a JVC camera, this is Sony, this is somebody else, the cables are somebody else, the headphones, somebody else, the stands are somebody else, the tripod, somebody else, even the AC cords are somebody else."
All right, but I think you work with Paul and get that, that, we don't need to know that.
I put a package together and prepare, because I don't say this is all.
Give it to Paul.
Okay. Great, got something going on that. Smith Academy Park?
Yes, um, yeah, I've been helping the Open Space Committee put out an RFP for that, which is out. So, yeah, we did a ma, the, the committee put together a mailing of landscape architects, there were probably a dozen or so, uh, firms on there, so we mailed the RFP out to them. I also put it on the, the Goods and Services Bulletin, so that's out there. They have moved their, um, their deadline way back, I'm not exactly sure why, but, uh, the proposals are not due until the end of December. But, um, they're, it's out there now, and we're moving forward.
For, for folks at home, uh, we're talking about the, a, a, a project undertaken by our Open Space Committee to develop a park on the site of the former Smith Academy adjacent to, uh, Town Hall. Earlier, they received money at Town Meeting approved for design, and, uh, this is the package to go out for, uh, design services for, uh, that facility. And then, there's a subsequent piece to that, they come back to Town Meeting, presumably to get approval for use of CPA money to actually, uh, build, construct a park. But, uh, the only thing that disturbed me was, their timing was such that they, they're skipping it another entire year. They're not talking about coming back with, uh, costs and, uh, design selection until the end of next May or some time like that. Well, Town Meeting's already passed and...
That's, yeah, come and gone.
So then you're... I, I'm not sure what their thinking is, but... And again, I think CPC is looking for input, uh, requests for proposals one December, not...
Yeah.
Not in January. So, it's gonna be a significant delay. All right, Center School?
Yeah, I've got another handout here. Info, uh, so I received this from Jim Maisick from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on Monday. He and I have both reviewed it. This is from AJI Architecture, that is who the, uh, committee, um, voted to pursue as our, our consultant on the Center School project. So I reviewed it, uh, Jim has reviewed it. It is in line with everything that we have talked about. So I instructed, uh, Jim to pursue, uh, you know, putting a contract together, so he's working on that now.
Great.
As long as there's no added extra money, that's it.
No, it's $45,000, that's all they have.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
And this is, uh, again, for folks, uh, we received a grant regarding Center School, what might be the best uses, and what's necessary in terms of facility improvements to support those uses, and PVPC is acting as our agent, we also have a committee working with them. And what we have here is, uh, the architect's proposal, uh, which fits the cost line that we have available for the work, and it's using one contractor for both services, i.e. the best uses and the facility requirements, which makes a lot of sense, no handoff problems. Okay.
What's, and the, the last line here, Paul? Reimbursable expenses in excess of the stated herein, so constitute additional work. Additional printing, as requested by owner and provided.
Yeah, they're just saying, saying that, anything above and beyond, uh, what they've outlined here, these are what the costs would be, and...
All right, but are we getting, 'cause we asked for a CD-ROM, a CD on every project. I mean, everything that we get from, uh, from the architects, we get it on CDs, so we have a, a file, digital file, and that's, I don't see that here, except for, uh, electronic files at $10 plus hourly rate. So I wanna make sure that we're, we're entitled to a, a CD-ROM underneath this whole program here, underneath this package.
Okay.
For future, that should automatically be in the cost.
Yeah, I mean, they, I, I can find out about that, but, you know, everybody puts their plans on CD-ROMs these days, so...
Well, that's, yes, and that's why, when I looked at the last page here, and it said that here's an extra charge here, that, that shouldn't be, we should automatically get that along with the print. Can you just make sure that's gonna happen?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next item, uh, day after Thanksgiving?
Yes, I have been asked if the Town Hall is going to be open, um, the day after Thanksgiving.
Now, I, I guess my question is, there's been a lot of, well, I'm not sure, and I guess that's a question, how much time has been given to the employees because of the construction here? I know, uh, I mean, when the servers are gone, down, are people going home, or, I'm not sure. Just give us an update on that, that much. How much time is taken away from...
Not much, you know, and people have been...
Do we have a...
And people have been, you know, making it up. Yeah, Jenny, well, that, the, the current tax collector and, um, assessor's office has been really getting the brunt of, uh, the disruption, um, in, in my office, you know, second to that. But I know, uh, Jenny's, for example, has been coming in off hours to get her work done. It's, it's, you know, for, for what she does, she, that's, she can't put stuff off, you know, that, there's, there's a process, an ongoing process that has to be done. So, as far as people taking time off because of the project, that, that's been pretty minimal.
That was one of the reasons I commented, as I did in the introduction. The folks have been putting up with a great deal of disruption, noise, and everything else, but, uh, they're plugging along, getting the job done. And in the course of all that, saving the town money in terms of not, not having us relocate them to trailers or something else while that work proceeds, so, uh, they've been putting up with a lot and being very flexible and, uh, maintaining a positive outlook.
Now, this would be...
They were here, the two that you had mentioned were here Veterans Day, because I came in and I was surprised to see them both in here, plus the clerk's office was open.
Okay, yeah.
So, I mean, they're, they're getting the work done, I guess even I'm on regular holidays, so I'm, you know, I don't have a problem with it.
Does this include just the Town Hall, or includes the whole town?
No, just, uh, the union, well, we're, we're back, just for folks at home again, the union contract with DPW provides for the day after Thanksgiving as a, one of their holidays. It's been tradition that the Board of Selectmen, virtually every, every year that I know of, has approved a, a day off, the day after Thanksgiving, for Town Hall staff, as Town Hall staff only.
All right, I move that we give the day after Thanksgiving off to the employees of Town Hall staff.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd, I'd like to take time just to, more on this subject of, of schedule, just go over a couple things. Two December, if we have any Community Preservation Committee requirements, they're due in. Capital budgeting items are due in. Uh, there's, we talked about stretch code, there's a stretch code session in Amherst.
I saw that.
I sent something to Stanley, if he'd be interested in going over there and learning about what the new changes are, or if he had any comments about the current stretch code, any issues, suggestions, uh, there, it's being updated. Five December, we've got the Hampshire Selectmen's Association meeting.
Right.
Are you going?
Uh, probably, yeah.
Okay, I, I've already responded, I'm going.
Let Keno.
Okay, so all three of us are going, yes. Uh, we have, uh, Capital Improvement Planning Committee meetings all day Saturday, on the seventh, meeting with everyone, and so, it's important folks get their capital budget items in on the second, so we can pass them out ahead of time and be ready. We've got, uh, on the tenth, the Board of Selectmen meeting, we're gonna do, uh, the, uh... I guess the annual report and maybe the audit and a few other things there, we can talk about that. There's a Pioneer Valley Planning Commission session that I have on the twelfth, and they're gonna talk about medical marijuana. I gave you...
I saw that.
Okay, so...
We've got, um...
I'll, I'll, if anything useful comes up, I'll share it with you after that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, I'll just give you a little bit of an update on where we're at with that committee. Um, we had our first meeting, um, we went into where the locations are and so on, and we've got, um, zoning bylaws from, uh, down on the Cape, I think it was Sandwich. We also got East Hamptons, we, and I think there was two or three others that we have for bylaws, to see what they have and how we can compare, and now, you gave me the one from Pioneer Valley Planning Council, so we'll look at all three. And, uh, we have another meeting coming up, I think, this Thursday, um, to deal with that, because we're trying to get it in before the end of the, the year, so the Planning Board can have their, their hearings and stuff. That's where we're at with that.
On the sixteenth of December, we talked about the Energy Report and the annual plan, uh, and the plan update. Operating budgets are due in. Uh, the nineteenth of December, we got another Selectmen meeting. Twenty-second of December, Lumen Area. I'll be there for Lumen Area, I don't know if anyone else...
I'll be here.
...plans to go with that. That's December's schedule. Ambulance abatements. Is there a motion to approve ambulance abatement for the month of September, the amount of $247.72?
Motion, care, I mean, motion, move to approve?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Is there a motion to approve ambulance abatement for the month of October 2013, in the amount of $1,287.17?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. I stuck this use of website on, not for, to belabor, you know, it struck me, we've had a couple of requests from various sources to put things on the town website. I'm not sure we have any policy set, set up, and, uh, I'd just like to suggest that, uh, we have Town Administrator take a look at what might be... administrator take a look at what might ought to be our policy regarding what goes on. I mean, this, what triggered it was a request for.
As a rule, we.
Girl scout information, but I've seen other information about social events coming up in Hatfield, that reunions and things like that. I mean, what are the kinds of things that we want to put on our website?
All right, as a rule, we didn't put any civic organizations on there because of that problem.
Okay, well, that's.
And what we did, I'm just giving you a little bit of feedback, what we did before was to allow them to go on Channel 15 and put it there, and that's the provision for that. So there certainly can put it under Channel 15, but on the website, it'd be a whole different story, because then you're talking maintenance, you're talking changes, whatever, and it's costly to the town.
Yeah, but it would require somebody to be constantly maintaining it, you know, and I don't know that somebody would be.
Well, I'm not trying to belabor it today, but just so we're fair and treat folks similarly in the future, so if it would be helpful if we, I'm sure there's, I'm sure MMA's probably got 1,000 samples of other communities.
We should have a program on updating that website anyway, on either a monthly basis or a quarterly basis. It should just be an automatic, okay? Put somebody in charge of it and make sure all the information is updated. And I'm not sure where we're at with that website, because I haven't been on it in quite a while, so I'm not sure if it is up to date.
Yeah.
Or who we have taking care of it.
Yeah, you're right. It needs systematically be.
Yeah, I think, you know.
I'd like to move that Paul arrange that it be updated at least quarterly, and put it on the record that that's what, make that a mandatory.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It probably may need it sooner than that, particularly after elections and.
Yeah, a lot of stuff outdated last time I was in there.
It should be monthly, I think.
Pardon?
I think it should be monthly.
Whatever you, I said at least quarterly.
Okay, okay.
If you want to do it monthly.
Yeah.
I don't want to commit you to monthly. If you want, I will. I was being lenient, Paul.
You know, if you do it monthly, then it's not, it's not a big job, you know?
But we're asking at least quarterly.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I was giving you a little leeway there.
Next item is operating budget. You know, we talked at the last session about strengthening the role of town administrator doing a first cut, and what I meant to do, and I failed to do, recall, we've earlier gone, this is last year, for example, to the finance committee and invited them to sit in with us, so we did joint reviews on all the budgets. Just throwing out as a proposal, so, because I think that was very valuable for us, very valuable for them. Everybody heard the same kinds of things, same time, an opportunity to answer questions or ask questions and kind of resolve a bunch of issues very rapidly. But perhaps if we're asking Paul to do the first cut, we could invite the finance committee to have someone sitting in, doesn't necessarily need to be their whole board, but one of their members sitting in on that first cut. Maybe have one or more, whoever, could be not necessarily the same one each time, however that might work. And then we'd get back to the joint review when we get to our review, you know, kind of the second cut as to issues, things that need to be resolved, as opposed to just the routine stuff. But I'm just proposing that as a way ahead, because I really didn't want to lose that link we had with finance committee and.
I think the finance committee should be part of the whole process. I mean, that's the way it usually works.
Well, it's our budget and they're supposed to be at arm's length.
I understand what you're saying, Jeff, but I truly feel that the finance committee should be totally involved in what's going on here, whether it's the selectmen's budget or not. Finance committee should be aware of everybody's budget, where they're at and what they're doing.
That's why I'm proposing, and that's why I proposed earlier for the joint reviews, and now proposing that we invite them to sit in on the first cut.
I'll leave that up to you, Paul.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I certainly don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
No problem?
No.
Okay, and then we have them, again.
Well, after the first cut, then it's, you know.
Joint?
Yeah.
The whole committees?
Yeah, just the way it's has been.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Because we want to have a chance to review everybody's budget at some point, yeah.
Oh, just a couple of things on operating budget. Are we going to put a slice in there for this FRTA?
I was planning on it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know.
Remember, we had the request for bus service, and we haven't, Paul's still, it's not on Paul, but he's been unable to get from FRTA a dollar figure. I'm not sure what there is.
To run through town, or is this going to be just to?
On Route 5.
Service Route 5.
Service Route 5, yeah. To have, you know, one or two official stops along Route 5. You know, primarily to service those medical facilities.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I think they do stop, well, I meant, I know they do.
Here's the thing.
I mean, I don't know, if they're doing it out of the goodness of their heart or what, you know?
No, you're right, okay.
It depends on the driver.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Some guys will stop sometimes, and sometimes they won't, so it's haphazard. They do make stops, but it's nothing that anyone can depend on, and that's what we need. We need a, we need a schedule.
I mean, I'm just saying that.
Needs to be, you know, when this happens, I'm sure it'll happen at some point, the hangup, and I don't understand why it's so complicated, but they've got the software to figure out the assessment, and they've been having problems with it, and the last email I got from them said, well, we're going to try another way to figure this out. So, I mean, this has been going on for a long time now.
I mean, the last surveys we did, it wasn't feasible for the town of Hatfield to spend X amount of dollars and to sport that, it just wasn't feasible.
Yeah, but I think that was for the, to come right through the center of town and everything.
They'd come through the center of town and go out.
That's not what we're talking, that's not what we're talking about now.
So if it's just on Route 5.
It's just Route 5.
And they come down from.
Where they're already going.
Where they're, they go up and down Route 5, five times a day.
So if we're not giving them anything now, and we offer them $2,000 a year, that 2,000 is better than zero. Because their software, they don't know what they're doing to software anyways.
Yeah, I don't understand why there's a hangup. So they're coming through town twice a day. Whatever happens in the future, they will need to coordinate with Pioneer Valley Transit Authority as well, because a lot of these folks are coming from down south. Most of them who are coming up here to Hatfield are within the PVTA service area, because they've done their surveys over here. That's where those folks are coming from. So there needs to be coordination in order to get, you know, for all those people to know that they can get a bus down, FRTA bus down in the center of Northampton, that will bring them up here at such and such a time, bring them back there at such and such a time, so there, you know, there needs to be coordination. So the assessment.
So we're really asking for one stop?
The assessment, there are one or two, one or two, probably, probably one.
Well, there's adult daycare next door.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure, you know, if someone's in a wheelchair, you can really make them go across the lawn.
I have been approached, well, first, I can't remember his name, we were approached last summer, but, and more recently, I was approached by the owner of the Danko Building.
Yeah.
He said, you know, what's going on with this? I said, well, this is actually, you know, we're looking into it. And I explained to him what was going on and what the hangup was. But we're talking, you know, when my conversation with FRTA, they said, well, you're, you know, somewhere between the size of Waitley and Deerfield, here's what their assessment is, here's what Deerfield's assessment is, yours is going to be somewhere in the middle. So we're talking $5,000, $6,000, $7,000, something like that. In my discussions with the property owner at Danko, he said, really? We'll pay for that. This means a lot, this means a lot to those people out there. This is important infrastructure for them.
Okay.
And we want to support our local businesses.
Okay, good. One other item on operating budgets. Are we going to get some report from our HR committee regarding, we talked earlier, I think.
Yes.
We're probably going to adopt whatever the social security raise was.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't.
What did it get, federal get 1% or?
One and a half, I think it is.
Well, federal, okay, well, federal employees got 1%, but.
Yeah, I haven't pulled that committee together yet, but will be soon.
Well, the other piece to that is the, what do you call it? Position table, I can't think of the terminology.
The classification.
Classification.
Yeah, well, I think that there's been agreement that it needs to be revisited, so.
Yeah, and the guidance to the committee ought to be, we phase in whatever we're going to do, not, not a big bang, but we need to address it and not ignore it, and it's, you know, we're at that stage, it's budget time. Board of Selectmen, capital projects, are we squared that town hall in Phase 2 is going to be in your capital plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
All right. We'll plug the number in there.
All right. Now, we got the transmission line, the energy projects we've been talking about. What about, what about, well, let's talk about the transmission line. Phase 2.
Phase 2 brings it up to Gore Avenue.
Phase 2.
Phase 2.
Phase 1 will get it up to.
Oh, okay, I thought there was a three-phase now.
Well, we don't know, we don't, we're hopeful we're going to get across the river.
Okay, all right, so.
Through the woods.
Assuming Phase 1 is up to Gore Avenue, then Phase 2 down to the center of town is if there's ever grant money, that's when I would recommend going for that, because the transite pipe out of water is fine, okay? It doesn't do any.
So, so let's.
Deteriorate or anything like that.
Put it in the latter part of the capital plan, just stick it in there?
Yep. The big thing is to get it out of the water.
Yeah, I know, that's the priority.
Yeah.
You agree with putting it late in the capital plan?
More so, I think we ought to be looking at the different projects in town, looking at the infrastructure, okay? I do know that North Street.
North Street, King Street.
Major problem on North Street with the sewer. Other problem, major problems on King Street, I guess, with the water. So there's these streets that really the infrastructure needs really looking at, because it's costing us a heck of a lot of money every year to repair.
Well, just to mirror that, what you just said, we had a meeting, staff meeting the other day, and discussing capital items and what has been in there for a little bit, you know, with the overlays, which includes North Street, King Street, South Street, Valley Street, where there's some infrastructure issues. As you know, we're down on South Street every year repairing something with the water, something pops with the water. So to pull that off for repaving until we fix the infrastructure, I mean, I don't want to go down there next year and pave South and Valley and have it pop.
I don't want you to do that.
So, I mean, that's an issue. So I think there's going to have to be something probably in the capital plan this year for some infrastructure improvements.
But to me, how I would, how I would classify one to, one being the highest priority, would be how much money we're spending on each street, like North Street. How much money did we spend on North Street on the sewer? If it was like $100,000 and everybody else was 10 or so, I mean, that would be my top priority.
Yeah, that is.
So that's how I would.
Them two streets, North and King, are top priority, they're in the capital plan for water and sewer improvements, plus reclaiming and redoing the streets and sidewalks, but is the town going to swallow that, I guess, is the question? I mean, you know, that's some big numbers.
Even if we do a portion each year, just to get it done.
It's.
Right now, we're not doing anything, except repairing.
Some big numbers, I mean.
Well, it's not as though it hasn't been identified as a requirement. It's a matter of timing and funding.
Correct.
Timing and funding, that's correct.
I mean, if the funding was in place, we certainly would do it.
You know, I'm hoping that the state at some point recognizes that the infrastructure in towns and cities are so important that they will help us take care of them, but that hasn't happened yet.
Well, we plan to go it alone, and hopefully somebody will come along, but don't bank on it. Okay, so you two are straight as to where projects are going to sit?
Yes.
All right. Town meeting articles, there's a list here. I guess I just wanted to get kind of straight on some of these, so we pass off some of these to Planning Board and others. 350th anniversary, all we're talking about there is setting up a fund. We don't even have to put any money in it yet, but that's racing towards us.
And I don't know if we can put money in legally for that, I don't know. I know Louise had reservations for that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so.
How did you do your previous?
What they did is they had the Historical Society run the whole show, and the money that was left over was put into the account and held on the side for the next one, which is the 350th coming up. That's where the $8,000 in that account came from. But I guess the society took it as a project on the side here. So I'm not, you know, I'm not sure how we're going to move forward with that, but we want to make sure that it's bound within the law here, with what we can do. It wouldn't hurt to have a committee just to stay on top of it, so we know exactly what's going on. All right, but as far as for funding, I'm not sure what we can do for funding. When I talked with Louise, that was what was last, last time, but the laws might have changed. We want to just be careful on funding.
Well, that's, that's an accounting question, not a treasury question. How about, how about asking Mike, is there an issue about the town expending any funds to organize and execute its 350th anniversary?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is.
Hadley just did it.
Yeah.
A couple of years back.
Yeah. But this is like the Lumenarian, and don't we spend our money on that?
Cultural council, yeah.
Cultural council money.
Well, but I don't know if they get a, honestly, I don't know if they get a grant. It's like $50, $100.
Yeah, I know, you have to be, tax dollars, you have to be careful on what you spend.
Yeah, we'll check on that.
Okay.
But we could go to, you're right, we can go to the cultural council and different monies that we can access, sure.
Medical marijuana, you're working that?
We're working on that, yep.
Noise ordinance, this is.
I saw a page in here, something like that, the bylaw.
That was given to me by the Planning Board, given to them by our animal control officer. I talked to him about it.
Which, this is Hadley's?
It's based, it's a tweaked version of Hadley's. What Hadley, Hadley had in the books.
It's a tweaked version?
Yeah, yeah, he made, he made some changes to it. He said there was a lot of it in there that we did not, I think, was necessary for Hatfield.
Well, I saw very, we don't have to close on anything today, but.
No.
I saw a snippet of the Planning Board meeting, and Bob Wagner volunteered to share that draft with the Ag Committee if they had any tweaks or suggestions.
Okay.
Because looking at that, I guess my first question is, who's submitting this bylaw and who's going to attest to it? Who's going to talk about it? Okay, the one for the noise ordinance, because in there, it talks about no bans, no whistling, no, I mean, you can't do anything. Because in there, it talks about no bans, no whistling, no, I mean, you can't do anything after a certain time. It's like, you know, the town shuts down and nothing happens here. You can't have any bans at the pavilion after a certain time. There's a lot of restrictions in that. And that's not going to fly at Town Meeting.
And some of them, again, we're not, we're not going to resolve, it needs, clearly it needs some work. Some of them are kind of vague as well about, okay, what level of noise, it's just very judgmental.
Yeah, well, that gets into, you know, when you start talking about noise levels, then you're, then you're getting into the urania of.
Testing equipment and all this other stuff, right.
Which we don't want to get into.
You don't want to get into that.
You know, and then putting it underneath the Police Department in force.
Well, it could be police, could be Animal Control, could be. Okay, so that one needs work.
Needs quite a bit of work.
Could you, could you get the one from Hadley?
Okay, yeah.
Because Hadley also has Right to Farm Act and they also have one of these noise things that doesn't undo that and kind of marries up. Hazardous materials and waste recovery, I don't even know what that's about.
What that is, is if there's a tanker truck that spills over on, in, on one of our roads in Hatfield.
So, this is fired?
Their company is obligated to clean that up.
Okay, we're sponsoring this then.
Pardon?
The Board of Selectmen then is sponsoring that.
This is actually Emergency Management.
Well, it's us. They're just our advisors. Engineering study? Oh, oh, that's, okay, we're, we're putting in.
I think you and I, you and I have talked about this.
Okay, so this is a request to CPC to.
Do the engineering study for the bridge.
One December.
Yeah.
Days from now. This is, you recall when we had the Landscape Architecture Group doing the Greenway Study here in Hatfield? And one of the things they did was had some depictions of the little bridge going across on Prospect Street and had that whole area cleaned up. This was, this is a proposal to go to CPC to ask for some money to take a look at, okay, what is it, what would we need to do with the bridge just to simply make it a walkway? Or a bikeway?
Well, I guess my question here would be, do we really need an engineering study or do we just want to revitalize the bridge to, of course, then you need engineering plan to make sure that it's structurally sound. I guess that's what we're looking at, right?
That's the question, yeah.
Okay, so that's where you would start then?
And we'd ask for some support from CPC to do that.
Because to me, I'd like to see the bridge.
Why not pick the whole thing up, put one of those, put a little walkway on there?
That's exactly, that's exactly right, just take it apart.
Maybe cheaper to take that off and.
To try and restore.
Than to try and restore it, but then if it's, if it's otherwise not in too bad shape.
Yeah.
Just running a new deck.
Well, what, what it involves in there, I don't know how close you guys looked at that, but I used to fish underneath it and the framework, I mean, it's rusted, it needs, it needs sandblasting and then repainting. And that's not something you want to do over the river because it's very expensive, so what my recommendation was, take it out of there, restore it offsite and then just bring them back. And then put it in, then put a whole new decking on and only use it for foot traffic.
They did that to one in Coleraine a few years back. And I think they actually moved it to a different location, but I don't know what the cost was.
And we can probably use CPC money for that.
Well, that's what we're just talking about here.
Even for the revitalization of it.
Okay, so, all right, you're going to just.
I'll work it.
Yeah.
What's, I didn't understand this thing on mosquito spraying, that wasn't mine.
Mosquito spraying was Board of Health, we were looking at how we're, how we want to spray, if we're going to spray next year. Okay, because of encephalitis and stuff like that, we may need a bylaw.
May well consider aerial spraying though, I mean, you want, remember how we used to do the streets, we used to have.
Drive around the road?
Right.
But I think it's going beyond that, I think now it's where we got to cover everything from the mountain down.
Right, but that's in there in case, we got to figure out how we're going to do that next year.
I'm just saying, I would figure that being aerial spraying like they're doing, you know, down, out east.
Like with other communities and.
Yeah, I mean.
So, that would be, that would be a.
I mean, that's going to be.
Look into that, okay.
Okay, so Board of Health is working that. This next one is Planning Board Changes Zoning Law. What it is, this zoning bylaw, there's two pieces that need, it just needs an update. One, it talks about an Industrial Commission, Industrial Development Commission, we now have an HRA, not an Industrial Commission. It doesn't list DPW as to be on receipt for all plans and they need to be very much in the loop on that. And then there's another, so that's just cleanup in terms of organizational elements.
Just to abolish it, that's all you're doing, right?
Well, no, no, we're just trying to clean it up. It tells the staff where packages are supposed to go, who's supposed to get them. So, and the other piece is it talks about certain people will be told the package is available for review. Certain people, certain offices are to get an entire copy. They need to sort out what they want to do. I think the Planning Board probably doesn't want to make 1,000 copies of some of these plans and proposals for, I'm not even sure they're following the current bylaw, but anyway, they need to.
Well, it's saying here, it changes the zoning bylaw just to delete the Industrial Development Commission.
Et cetera. And add DPW. I've got a copy here.
Okay.
It's only a paragraph, it's only about this long.
Okay.
It's not, right here. This is, you get this all the time? That is the bylaw. One copy each to the building, Inspector Health, Conservation, Industrial Development, we'll change that. Fire, Police, Board of Selectmen, da-da-da-da. And then it also says about, oh, here you go, they'll send one copy. So, that's a lot of.
So, should it go to Redevelopment Authority instead?
Yeah, instead of there, and DPW is not listed anywhere, it's getting a copy.
Okay. So, eliminate Industrial Development.
Yeah, it's.
And add DPW.
Yeah, and then, but then the other thing is for
Just clean up.
Planning Board to sort out who's actually going to get a physical copy as opposed to one being available.
I thought you were physically removing the Industrial Development Commission.
I don't know, yeah.
But you can do that anyway because that's part of the Selectmen's cleanup. Because we appoint Industrial Development Commission, years ago we did.
There isn't any now.
There isn't anymore, it's done, right.
Okay, so that's, that's just a, that's a Planning Board item. Expedited permitting and what we're talking about there, I thought that was going to happen last year, but at the time, Bob Bartlett was Chair, he was all in favor of it. This is simply to accept Massachusetts General Law Chapter 43, Section D. And it says we'll handle permitting in a certain timeframe and Bob argued that, well, we already do that anyway. And this whole thing came up in one of our DBriefs on the Mass Works. We'd get extra score if we adopted that particular section of the law. Mixed use, this is another Planning Board item, remember we asked.
Over industrial, I mean, over in business, residential over business.
Yeah, there was some misunderstanding, let's call it misunderstanding at Town Meeting as to exactly what that was. It has nothing to do with multifamily housing, only talking about a barber living above his barber shop, that type of thing. And there are only tiny areas of the entire town of Hatfield that are impacted. There's not going to be any major housing development as a consequence, so. PVPC worked that at our request and we support bringing it back. Burning without a permit, the Attorney General member had some issues with 3.5.
Needs to clean up.
Just needs some cleanup. Net metering, remember, this is the HCOG provided article.
That didn't get on last year, that's got to get on this year.
Yeah, all it does is allow the Board of Selectmen to enter into agreements for, over the three years and enter into net metering contracts. I don't know what the Animal Welfare Bylaw is.
I don't. That was, basically, it's a, it's the, it's the dog bylaw. I think we've talked about it just in passing here and there, but I've looked at your existing bylaw, it looks pretty out of date to me.
Okay.
I think it needs some serious updating.
Okay, because I thought we updated a couple of years ago.
Pardon me?
I believe we updated a couple of years ago.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I haven't talked to the Animal Control Officer yet about this, but I will.
Okay, that's Paul's thing.
Okay. Town Hall Stabilization, I don't know, we, we were going to do that last year.
You bagged it.
Then we ran out of any money to put in it.
Right.
So, we dropped it.
Just put a placeholder in.
Okay.
Just put a placeholder, just in case.
I thought we had it set up, but nothing went in it, didn't we?
We had a count set up?
Didn't they? No, we don't have any, we set it, we set it up so we can put money into it if.
Yeah, but we never, we never brought it before Town Meeting, we tabled the article.
We tabled it, I can't remember now if we did or not.
Yeah.
Well, it makes some sense, so. Compensated balances, remember, we did, now this is one, we did do the article but we didn't put any money into it. So, we're talking about putting a few dollars into it.
Yeah. That's fair, if somebody's reticent.
Did we do the article?
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure we did.
I thought we tabled it because there was no money, or we didn't bring it up because there was no money, check into that, Paul.
Oh, I will.
Okay.
Yeah, we, this is, we, we agreed it made sense to build a fund so operating budgets wouldn't get devastated by someone's untimely departure or unplanned departure. We'd rather have, we'd have funds there to pay off the unused leave, that type of thing. This is one I was going to stick in, but let's forget this, amend the capital planning bylaw. I think I, we can do, the notion here is to treat the capital budget just like the operating budget. And I'll get with Bill, Bill O'Neill. I think we can do that without any, without any, any other bylaw. Because the bylaw that we have concerning capital planning has its mental model behind it, a standalone capital plan. And the notion there is if you had tailings, like it calls for us to go get in July from the Town Accountant a report on tailings, those dollars would simply fall back into the capital budget and could be used against other capital projects over time. So, we may, we may administratively simply be able to work it like that, and many other communities do, most communities do actually.
When it comes to capital planning, I mean, the law says we have to have a capital planning committee, okay? The capital plan sets out what our potential wish list is or what our needs are for down the road. Doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to do the project, we may not have the funds to do the project, and what you're saying is put that in there.
No, you're right, we appropriate each year for those projects.
I wouldn't want to see funds just going into a capital planning
Slush Fund?
Like a slush fund, right, okay, when we need it in other places. And let us decide, you know, when the time comes on where that money goes and when. I think, maybe I'm not reading you right.
No.
What I took from you is, what you're saying is, whatever money is left over at the end of the year for the budget, it would go in towards planning.
Well, for example, let's say we had a capital budget of, capital plan in or a budget of one item, the Town Hall. And say there's a million dollars left over, or not a million, there won't be a million dollars.
Whatever it is.
There's $10,000 left over at the end of the project. Well, that money then would fall back into this capital budget as a residual and could be one of the sources of funds to be applied.
So, you're taking it from existing plans and putting it towards future plan?
Right. To a future, to a future plan that we agreed to.
That I could go along with, yeah, I, I thought you were taking it from our regular budget.
No, 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 this is already appropriated to a capital.
I can agree to that.
There's some extra left over. We then apply that residual tailing toward some newly approved to reduce the cost.
You have to be careful on that, doing it that way, because sometimes it is, we borrow.
There's certain tags, have to be similar purposes sometimes, I understand.
So, there's, you got to be careful on how you word that.
Yeah.
Because you don't want borrowing to be sitting in there for five years and then all of a sudden the people get zapped, filled on the road.
That was it.
Okay.
Anybody, well, it's.
I don't have anything else.
Hard to believe that we're racing toward another Town Meeting.
I just have one thing, two things, Jeff. There's an abatement for a water, for a sewer abatement, for a pool liner. Kathleen McLean, I'm recommending that you abate the sewer side of $186. We did the calculation on the new liner and that's the cost.
Okay, nowhere in here, Phil, I, because I've got a note on mine, it says, how many gallons is this pool?
25,000.
25,000?
Yes. It's 18 by 36.
Okay, and if you take 25,000 gallons and put it into the formula, you get 16170? That's what I'm asking, because there's a formula that goes along with this and I don't want to just take a part of this.
Yes.
If there's 25,000 gallons, that's all I want to give is 25.
And we did it to the cubic feet at the 565 rate, yes, that's what we did, there's a formula to that.
Okay.
Attached to this number for the abatement.
All right, I don't, I've got the formula at home, I didn't know if you changed it or not.
No.
But I didn't, on this thing here, it should state, we should state in here that under the the pool, whoever replaced the pool liner, that person should be responsible to put in what X amount of gallons it is for the pool liner. What their.
Oh, what they go.
Yeah, okay, because.
Yeah, some of them do it, some pool companies will give you the gallons.
Yeah, well, we should recommend it, like Florence Swimming Pool in this case here, nowhere in any of his bills say that it's 25,000 gallon.
Right.
All right, and that, I would rather see it put in, put in writing on the thing here, so that might be one of the things you might want to change.
We can make that change, the abatement form.
So, is there a motion to approve application for water sewer abatement for 451 Main Street in the amount of $186?
Just sewer abatement.
Sewer, correct.
For sewer. I'll move that we approve the 16170 on the sewer site only.
One second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's a package that was in your, it was in the information section, but it's actually for this concern of zoning change. Is there a motion to refer to the Planning Board zoning change for lots four and five, map 216 from rural residential to light industrial? Where are you? It's from here. Office of Alfred Albano Jr. And there's also a letter.
I move we forward it to the zoning board because this is a time-sensitive issue and they have to be notified within so many days. I move that we forward it to the Planning Board for execution.
He already did.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Any other discussion?
That's because I couldn't find it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a, also a thing in your package.
Jumping around here, Jeff.
Yeah, I know, well, this was also, I think, in the information. It's a request from the Town Clerk to change fees for, regarding dogs. The proposal and the motion, is there a motion to change the current fee for male, female dogs from $10 to $15 and for neutered spade dollars from $6 to $10? With a penalty for a dollar a month for every month late to a penalty of $2 a month for every month late.
Well, I'll make the motion just to get it on the table.
Okay, so, for discussion.
Okay, the discussion part that I have on this here is the amount of money that's totally collected, okay? From the previous years from the dog permit. But also, the number of dog complaints or animal complaints that come in and how much are we paying to send Scott out, the dog officer out, to execute these? Okay, and that comes into, that to me is important on how much we're going to charge for a fee, because if he's got dog complaints and he's put in thousands of dollars worth of time, then our fees should be up on some of this stuff here. So, the documentation, I'm looking for documentation here to at least give us a, this might be in line, but it could be, you know, the fees are up another $10 from this. in line, but it could be, you know, the fees are up another $10 from this. Without some justification, I'm just looking to get a little more information before I make that decision. I mean, if you guys want to go ahead with it, that's fine, but I think, you know, those things, the total amount collected, you know, if we collect $1,000 and Scott puts in $2,000, then maybe we ought to up it a little bit more, because of the complaint process. That's all I'm saying.
Well, this came up last year, like with Louise, or last year or the year before, and she didn't want to raise it. I thought that's what, I know there was something with the licensing, and she, I can't remember if it was for dogs or something else, but there was one item that she didn't feel that we should raise for a certain reason.
Okay.
Well, this.
But I'm looking at the fees here, it goes from 37 down to 3 from the communities. So, you know, I mean, it could be, we're a $25, six communities, we're $25 each they're charging for the male, female dogs. But it could be based on certain criteria, okay? And to me, I would look at how many dog complaints we got from the dog officer and how much, and let that compensate the town back what it's costing us. I guess that's how I'd set the fee. I don't know if you guys agree or not, but that's how I looked at that when I was looking at the fee, because it might be more, you know, it might be just what it says, but without any of those figures, and.
I hear what you're saying, so, but the underlying question is, can you charge in the fee structure for that function? Fees are not taxes, they have to be associated with the cost of this transaction. So, I guess there's a question that it would have to be resolved. I understand what you're saying.
Enforcement is part of that transaction.
Yeah, I just don't.
The way I look at it, anyway. I don't know if, you know, if you guys just want to go ahead with it, that's fine. I just thought.
I just wanted to run it by Louise probably and just find out, I'm not even sure if it was dealing with this or some other licensing.
Well, I know, I know Lydia wanted to talk to you about it, but, you know, she's not in today, so I put it in the packet, you know, just so you had it ahead of time, because I think she doesn't.
Well, we can do it.
Yeah.
Is there a time?
Take it under advisement.
Is there, is she looking for some?
I don't think so, no.
All right.
No, I know she wants to talk to the board.
Or is there a season for these renewals?
I think it starts in March, isn't it?
Pardon me?
The licensing starts in March, I believe.
March, yes.
Oh, okay, so.
She just wants to update it, that's what she's doing.
Bring it back next meeting, then?
Bring it back next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
And you can let her know our concerns, if you can get our, you know, what's the total collected versus how many dog complaints that we've got? How much, you know, Scott keeps track of all that?
Yeah.
Get it from him.
Yeah.
Got something else to bring up.
Don't go outside our package, Jeff.
No, you don't even have it. It's this, it's this here, I made a copy for you. In a plan just recently published, it's dated September, but it was really approved later on, by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, titled Our Next Future: An Action Plan for Building a Smart, Sustainable, and Resilient Pioneer Valley. One, it covers a range of topics. One of them has to do with housing. And kind of a wake-up to me, and I'll acknowledge I was unaware of this, but on page 74 of this report, one of the charts reflected in discussions has to do with families in poverty. And this is from census data. And I, quite frankly, was shocked to learn that Hatfield ranks just behind Springfield and Hoyoke in all of Hampshire and Hampden County, in terms of the percentage, population of families in poverty. Springfield is 21.8%, Hoyoke 27%, and Hatfield 16.6%. Some of the other comparisons, West Hampton 2.6%, East Hampton 2.8%, Hadley 2%, Williamsburg 4.5%, Chesterfield 3.1%, Goshaun none.
Don't forget, a lot of this has to do with our elderly population.
Yeah, I just.
A big elderly population.
I was just, every time we talk about USDA loans, we always say, well, we're too wealthy.
Wrong.
I have a hard time making the connection, but, in any event, I raised that because Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has come out beyond the DLTA, the District Local Technical Assistance, to offer up, at no cost, technical support if any community, kind of on an as-available basis, but, an as-submitted basis, to help any community that wants to look at food security, access to parks, and open space, and affordable housing. And this Families in Poverty section fell into the bin of affordable housing. So, I'd like to propose that we put in a note to PVPC asking that they provide some technical assistance related to, in light of this data, give us some technical assistance with regard to affordable housing strategies.
I would go along with it as long as the Planning Board was incorporated with that, okay, because it comes into play with the zoning and everything.
Well, all you're doing is studying, you're not deciding anything.
Right.
Clearly, out of that would come, if anything, potentially some zoning changes or.
But I guess work with the Planning Board.
Yeah.
In regards to that.
But this is just a study, not.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to do something outside, you know, on the Planning Board that says, hey, you guys didn't let us know this, or, you know, whatever the case may be, I'm not sure, but work in conjunction with the Planning Board, I don't have a problem with it. So we could, we could let them.
Well, the study clearly would involve the Planning Board, or any.
I mean, the letter can go out to PVC, PVPC, to state that we're interested and that they should coordinate with the Planning Board.
No, they coordinate with us. I mean, the Planning Board can ask for studies on its own, it can ask for DLTA assistance on its own.
Okay. So.
We can make, certainly make the Planning Board aware that we're interested in looking at this.
Because every, another thing that you look at is the 55 and older, capewalk and that, that all comes under low.
Yeah.
Low-income, low-housing, okay, you know, just like.
Yeah, but supposedly, we are, we're not even at our actual rate of having low-income housing or.
10% stock.
Right? I mean, we're below that right now.
Right. The one thing I don't want to get into, and I'll vote against it, is to have low-cost housing under the town of Hatfield.
Oh, managing.
Management, I do not want to get into that situation at all. I just want to be real clear on that, that's my stand on that.
Well, we're not, all we're talking about here is having someone come in with some technical expertise to help us explore the problem, and outline some potential things, actions that the town might take if it choose, would choose to do so. And the technical assistance is free.
Mm-hmm. I don't have a problem.
And I, did you know that we were?
I didn't, I was surprised when I read that. I had no idea we were behind Springfield, I thought we would be.
Well, we're right behind Hoyoke.
Hoyoke.
Okay. No, I saw that and I said, that can't be right. So I actually contacted PVPC and said, that figure can't be right, would you please verify? They got back to me, said, no, that's right.
I knew that we had low income because of the elderly population, but I didn't think we're behind Hoyoke.
I also talked to one of the police officers about it. He said, yeah, yeah, he said, well, okay, now what's the population of Hatfield? What's the percentage? Oh, yeah, that seems about right, you know, we've got, you know, motels, the trailer park, apartment buildings all up on Route 5, that's where it is.
So say.
Capewalk over here.
That being said, we should be eligible to get downtown revitalization, all that stuff.
Oh, you're.
Then they don't, they don't hear that, Adam.
No.
When it comes to money.
Well, yeah, when they set up this kind of stuff, that's what it comes into play.
Yeah, well.
So, we need to get on the bandwagon and get some of that money for down our parks and stuff like that. The money's out there for that, and we qualify.
I agree, there's an issue and we ought to.
And we got the facts and the numbers to back it up.
There's, I love this quote, "There's a regional need to transform these areas," that read us, "into communities of opportunity through good schools, healthy and safe environments, decent housing, access to financially stable employment to reduce social disparities and allow all residents to succeed and thrive." Well, is there consensus that we at least put our request in for help in light of this? Help us with, take a look at affordable housing?
The request would be to explore.
That's what it is?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
I don't know, do we? I don't think we do.
When are the DLTA proposals due?
I can tell you in a minute, because I've got it right here. This one, this is separate from DLTA. This is in addition to.
Oh, okay.
There is, there wasn't a date on this. The DLTA ones, which also could cover housing, is due, I think, the 16th of December, but let me check, 13th of December.
So are you moving on it, Jeff?
All right, the chair normally doesn't move it.
Well, I'll move that we.
All right, is there a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Paul, would you, here, I'll give you, that's, and cite this, you know, in light of this report, you have a copy? This one here?
Yeah, I have a copy of that.
In light of that.
I have a copy of that, yeah.
Request some support, technical support to take a look at affordable housing at town Hatfield.
Okay.
Now, did you have any other DLTA requests?
Uh, no, I don't.
Because we could still.
Nope. There's a couple of things in our package here.
We just did this.
Yeah, but there was two of them, and there was one request from the attorney and the other request was from the.
But it's the same one.
Yeah, it's the same one. So that's out.
We took it.
All right. Also, are you going into further on this here?
We got.
We've got a couple more in our package. Especially one from Murphy, Toomey, and Lahane, or attorneys at law. I don't want to deal with that, I don't know what that's about.
Oh, no, when you, every time you have an audit, you have to go to the attorneys who support you, and they have to provide the auditor's information on any potential liabilities that the town might be exposed to.
And that's all that is.
And that's all that is, and Bill O'Neill has one in there.
But reading it, it says that this firm represents only the town's school department on a regular basis.
Right, so that's part of the town.
Yeah. So, they're saying that the information set forth here in, as of today's date, except as otherwise noted, and we have disclaimed any undertaking, advise you of changes, so on, there are, there were $1,394.46 in billed and unpaid charges, and no unpaid charges owed to the firm.
All it says is we, the town, well, in this case, the school has paid them.
Okay, so.
It's legalese, legalese, we don't owe them any money.
The legal jargon, I'll tell you.
That's a standard part of any audit.
Okay.
Are there any potential legal?
As long as we paid the bill, that's all I care about.
Legal exposures.
Okay.
I'm assuming that.
God's sakes.
Greg is not here?
No.
I sent him in.
He was here.
Phil, did you have anything else?
I just have one more thing, I just want to thank Key for all the work she did with the Manessie bid, the last bid that we put out for the surplus truck. She did a great job taking the photographs, coordinating it through that process, and we ended up receiving $4,253 for the old tanker truck, so I just want to thank you.
We just got February storm money?
That's my knowledge.
Yeah, it's, I don't know, I forgot, it was eight or 18,000? What did we put in for?
Well, it's 75% of what we have submitted, so.
Well, town treasurer has a report that we're.
Yeah, I didn't see it, so.
Well, let's check with him, there's another good news, a little late, but we'll take it whenever it comes.
Finally, right?
Paul, did you have anything?
I have nothing else, no.
This other one thing, this kickoff meeting, you didn't, I didn't see you go over this one here, but I'm not quite sure what the heck this one's about.
Oh, that's on procurement?
Comb, combines?
Electronic procurement.
Oh, yeah. The state has this system called Compass, where you can, that's how you buy off the state bid.
Okay.
Which is a real pain in the neck to deal with. So I was delighted to find out recently that they're replacing that with this, so that's just for your information.
You can also buy off GSA, can't you? General Services, federal governments?
Oh, yeah, I've never done that, but I guess you could.
The other, the other thing that you have to be careful on is, like, we have the Hampshire County bids that go out, and a lot of times you're going to get cheaper if you put out a bid for your own.
Well, like on fuel and like on blacktop.
Well, that helps.
We've done, we've done really well.
Right, but then there's other things that if you put it out separately for bid, you may get better bids coming in. So, like on blacktop or something like that.
Blacktop, you got a real good price.
Yeah, but I know a couple of years ago, we could have put it out for a rebid and got it at a lower price. Yeah, so, but you're right, overall, it's a worthwhile cause, no question about that. That's all I've got.
Do you have anything else?
That's all I have, although we could have, you want to go into executive session?
Yeah, let me, just a second. Let me find my sheet.
On the possible litigation.
They're going to be there, bro.
Is there a motion to go into executive session? The Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Rule 3, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation. Given an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I'll move.
Second.
Lesko, aye.
Adam, scan.
Boil, aye. We will not be returning to open session. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday.